So, it's just, yeah, it's just all over the place. It's, it's an idea. It's not a, there's some different places to see better.
I mean, I, I replied, I was like, but I didn't hear from you.
Did you, did you walk back in?
No. What was that about?
Yeah.
Yeah. That's why we have this partnership. Yeah. Right. I mean, I'm not.
And you just show them.
Yeah. So, let's see. Did, did he help you?
Yes.
What was that about?
Yeah.
That's a cover.
My Tom, my Tom.
Okay. 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 Okay.
It's just, yeah, it's just all over the place. It's, it's, it's an idea. It's not a, there's some different places to see better.
I mean, I, I replied, I was like, but I didn't hear from you.
Did you, did you walk back in?
No. Oh, really? And why go, I think, on a third of the painting?
No, you gotta, you gotta go into that section. You know, on the trees.
Yeah. Yeah, but is that where the lunch, the, you sure? You know where that is?
I think the right button.
Yeah. Yeah.
Feel like a call for the committee, the whole meeting Monday, May 16th, 7:00, 8:00 PM. Please call and vote.
Sir Reddick.
Here.
Here. Montague.
Here.
Crook.
Here.
Peters.
Here.
And Murray.
Here.
Do you motion to excuse Mary? Some will.
Yes.
Yes.
Yep.
Yes.
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 Yes. Alright, thank you. She's gonna, she's gonna try to get here. She's trying to lay. So, I'm gonna move her, uh, number one to the end. Only off chance she gets here. And if she's not here by the time we get to that, then we'll just, uh, we'll start. Um, alright, let's go. First up is Orange Rules and Claims, uh, chairing the mayor.
So, we've talked about this a number of times. And, uh, really could have been a master plan and taking away that tagline. I'm just having, we're here. We need discussion on it and then marking last week, making, still kind of having a tree as the tree of the hand and just having it to your resolution form instead of actually like a tagline. I'm going with the name for the jail.
Yeah, that was the idea. Uh, give some respect to the history of the Dogwood. Let's make that Dogwood Tree our city tree. So, things can still go on with the Dogwood Tree. I know lions give away Dogwood Trees. Dogwood Trees have been no more beautiful this year than any year I've ever seen in my life. If that makes sense. But the fact is that the, the tree has been important to our history. Let's make it our city tree. And it doesn't necessarily need to be the fact that we're a Dogwood Tree City of any kind, but the fact that, uh, we can still keep it in our history. So, that is the resolution of that. Questions?
I think it's a great idea, you know? I mean, especially at this time, you drive around, you see these beautiful Dogwoods everywhere. And, uh, it does have like what Mr. Sarball said that when they, you know?
History.
Yeah, the history's awesome. And, you know, maybe it should have been voted more early on, but I'd say at this point, it's a great, you know, a great thought and we're gonna have to keep it until infinity, you know, with our special tree, you know, to create a new image for our camp.
Yeah, I concur. Uh, I think we've heard some residents about the history of it, the beauty of it, uh, viability of the tree. I just think we need to make a more pointed effort because we have Dogwood Pool, Dogwood Park, uh, any of our future park, uh, projects or even on Earth Day, we should plant Dogwood Trees.
That's a great idea.
Why don't we do that? We have these great nonprofit, uh, community groups that wanna do things in this community. We have to set aside for some things. Let's just make that conservative effort and try to do that every year.
Well, that's how it would be perfect.
You know, and we're still re-establishing the old Dogwood Center, kind of 50 years old, 60 years old. I don't think your lifespan will be certain in the future. Alright? Alright, good to go. Alright, next up is Parker Rec, Chairman Ford.
Um, yes, Chairman, uh, member, Councilman Sirado, talked about this open space over by, uh, the Little League Complex. And I'll let Mark talk about it. We had the discussion about the, you know, the inter-label.
Doug and I talked about this and I've got some things from him here and Jim and I just talked about it. We have that on the, uh, can you put that up there, Mary Beth, at this point? Uh, and I think everyone has it in front of them here. There's some land over there that's right next to the, the Little League Fields. And it was, uh, what was the name of that, uh, of the, it was Verlens or? Lujie.
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 That's it.
Yeah. And so, we, this was set several years back, probably about five, 10 years ago, five, six years ago. And, uh, so it's a beautiful property. I, if you haven't walked it, please go back there and take a look because it is just, it goes on forever. And it's a nice area there. And there are some needs that, uh, that we could use. Number one, and I, is parking, uh, in that area right there. We've talked about that over, over the years, but we didn't want just nothing but a big parking on there. That didn't seem to work. But there's an opportunity there for shelter, first of all, shelter like Dogwood Shelter, which from what I hear, we could use several of those. They're rented out. We have running managers for us, um, you know, and we could make this even a little bit nicer. You know, somewhere you'd have whitey showers. People are always looking for places. This one could be like Dogwood Shelter where we divide it into two or different sizes. We can really do a, we've got some money from the stock or something that I think he would be proud. And I knew, I knew Earl very well, more than just a bathroom under his name. I think it's very important that, uh, this is something that, you know, could really enhance that area right there and people could go to. Along with that, um, is an opportunity for an area that therefore possibly a dog park. Um, you know, it's one of those, you know, if you look at things, it's nice to do, good to do, and must do things. This is kind of run between the nice to do and good to do. It's kind of a neat thing. It's not something that, uh, Rotary Club might be interested in sponsoring that, supporting that, which is always a plus. Uh, and then when you look at even back further, oh, uh, that's just an opportunity if there's a, the Garden Post Society, that might be a nice area. Hey, that'd be a good area over there for them too. So, there's just, you know, endless areas there. None of that, but you're, you're looking at an area here that's gonna attract people. You already got the, the Little League over there. Uh, they can use the parking at times. We could use their parking in the winter for the, uh, for the shelter. There's no reason there in the wintertime for the Little League Post. Um, the dog park would be a seasonal thing. Uh, it would be, you know, basically from May to, what, October, basically. It would need a little bit of grading back there. There are some no spots that are on the back there. And most of that all closed down to that little creek. Uh, but really that would create, really just fencing and some water for the dogs. And someday if we did not want that, that would be all you pull up. So, it's not like a major structure. But the area here towards the top there with the shelter and the park, I think, is, uh, between a good to do and a must do thing. I think it's a nice thing to do for us that really could enhance that area again and, uh, we could make some money off that. So, that's just a thought. I'd like us to start thinking about that and answer, no, this rendition is just a rendition. Uh, the mayor and I went out there just before we came here and there's a, out there where it says that outdoor area, that might be the best place to actually put the shelter because the view behind it is gorgeous. Uh, and you could put a little bit more parking up right here, maybe a play area of some kind. But I wouldn't wanna get too close to the road there with like a play area that involves kids because that really isn't, it'd have to be in the back. But just a thought, open up a discussion. Yes, Fonte?
I'm looking at your rendering, I'm thinking, do you have anything for dogs or something? How is that thinking?
Well, dog parks do have to be big. I'll tell you why. Dog parks require a little bit more than one run. It requires passive, an area for passive dogs, which means dogs that don't wanna be associated with other dogs or, you know, the smaller. And then usually what happens is they have, uh, two runs that they can alternate. Okay? When you're working on one or if they got all mighty, well, they can close that one for the long, for the bigger dogs and you open up the other one. Or when you're cutting one, you open up the other one. So, there's usually two that alternate, so you can take a water, care of one. It's a little bit, you know, more, I've been to several of them in different states. So, I've been, seen a lot. You should probably follow that.
There'd be odor.
This is just a rendition. This is not, no, you're, you're, whatever.
You have to take off.
There's rules of the dog.
You have to take off.
And most, most dog park people do not look very fairly if you are a dog personally. You leave that on the ground. But they kind of police themselves. You have, you, that's what, whoever sponsors that, like the Rory, would be in charge of getting the bags and putting those, you know, that.
That's a really nice meeting spot. There's another gathering.
It's a little gathering. They kind of have their points and they meet.
Usually this part of this thing is, it's right on the wall.
The shelter, I have my concern about the shelter.
Oh, the shelter, right.
With that as your park. I wonder if it'd be huge for a little, we could rent chairs, tables.
It solves a lot of our needs in the community. Dog park, there's big dogs and small dogs. We got to separate them.
Right.
But conceptually, this is a great plan. I think we need to, you know, get engineering involved for any kind of shoe or water, sand areas. Community gardens can be a plus. It's a very good group that wants somewhere to go. We just haven't been able to find something right now. And I feel bad about that because they're very positive about doing, I think, to take care of it. But as a long-term goal, it could be, uh, you know, the garden area, community garden area. Um, parking, as we know, would need to be more of the overlord of the Little League Complex and just for people using the trails and so forth. What's exciting about this though is we can design it to be anything we want. And we can, we have the availability now through grants that we haven't really done before. We have nature groups grants. We have land and water conservation grants. We have Queen Ohio Trails Grants. There's a, there's many grants out there. Now's the time to really look at this this year for next year's grant opportunities. And if we can structure our grant opportunities with some nonprofit groups, uh, the schools or anybody we can tie into, it's gonna give us more points that'll make us, give us a higher criteria to grant evaluation process. There could be $150,000 in grants we could apply towards this as well as a dog fund. So, it's not like the city of North Kansas write a check for 300, 400,000 dollars a night. Now's the time to plan for it. I think it's great that Mr. Stocker deserves, I think, my, my councilman Sirado said, more than a bathroom. Let's make the entire complex build around his, his, his fortunate donation to us. And then get the park committee involved, get everybody involved, we can spend some time to really develop it. The other thing we need to do is look at, uh, off the waterway there, right behind the big field, is we need a bridge up there. We need a bridge. And let's not forget the bathroom needs. We had some, a limited discussions about bathrooms on our court. I think we'd better serve and move that here and make that bathroom available to the trail users because there are visual facilities out here. They cannot go into the Little League Complex, they're locked. They're not available 24/7. Where they would be possibly here, we could have an outdoor kind of interior bathroom here situation. So, we're thinking about this. So, then we do have a place for people to use that wanna walk a mile and a half, two miles on the, on the trails. We all know those are great trail sections. The most used trail section is Star County. And then again, Star County Parks would be a, collaborate with this would be a partner. So, we're looking at three or four entities that come in here and really do a nice job with this. So, I'm excited about it. Thanks for bringing it on, Mark. And, um, it's, it's gonna fulfill a lot of needs that we have in the city.
Is that flooded out over there? Is that a flood plain on the backside of that?
Um, I have a section here that shows the flood plain itself in Jim gave, the backside over there.
Like the garden area?
Yeah, there is, well, it's kind of in and out, but yes, it's kind of in the flood plain in that particular area.
So, that would be something.
So, there's nothing else to go in there.
Yeah.
And, uh, you know, it, it looks like it's low, um, in a certain area right there. Now, that could be, you know, I don't know what we can do in the flood plain as far as, you know, raise it to the creek. But really, there's a creek there, uh, that all that water comes down. If there comes St. James right now, it makes it come. But, uh, the other thing, Doug, I didn't really think about till you mentioned some grants, that there are like pet shops and things that do get involved in these and they have special things that they do, uh, at these dog parks and, you know, double race and awareness and have like, uh, you know, different kind of training sessions and so on. So, that's down the road, of course, once we think of it. Again, this is, this is an idea. You could put the dog park and price park too if you wanted. I mean, there are other areas. I'm not saying that this is the only, we need to take a look at it. And that's why that we brought this up, to take a look. I think, looking at the front here, I think the shelter and parking again is, you know, possibly must do stuff. It's, you know, and it's a really cool thing. The other sides in the back there are things that we could grow on. It could be really cool. Kind of deep those.
You know, one thing, when people are looking at a lot of, like how to bring millennials into the community, two of the top things that they mention are dog parks and these, these community gardens. Because they want to go engage, they wanna be a part of the community, and they'll go to them. I mean, they're plain local and, I mean, you don't have to go far to go to a dog park. They're two beautiful parks. And they could set up a gathering spot. And we could talk about the gay society. They probably one time this summer had 400 people and heard about their dogs and they brought a donation item. There were food trucks around. So, it brought people to the area then. So, it's more than just for the dog people. I mean, again, this gathering spot, in, if it makes people want to live in the area, that's huge.
As an example, that's brilliant by their job, but Springfield, we had a Barton Park which is a big fundraiser for Summit County Community Society. It raised over 50,000 dollars. There's no reason why we couldn't develop this and have it around here. Because if we have enough parking, we have enough open area to do it.
And that, I heard, and Sandy was saying about, they have some kind of dog thing and that they love them getting a dog or something like this.
Well, it's, and I think the key is, um, this land that unlike, we were thinking of being a park or, I think there'd be a lot of people who would trust and concern about that, right from the start. But in this case, this land isn't, other ones are out there that were not really culled out. It's not a nice word. So, I think it's a great idea and kudos to Martin and his parks here.
It's an idea, yeah, it's not, yeah, I'm not an architect anyway, but who's the guy in Seinfeld? He wanna be an architect in Georgia? Yeah. I don't think that's, yeah, that's, yeah, I'm handling, yeah. But I'm not an architect.
The only question was, it looks like if we, just if we were to keep the gardens and that, it couldn't have a flood plain? So, does it flood a lot over there? Is that, I mean, it'd be a shame if, like, you have a lot of water.
Show your picture.
Yes.
There's, the backside of it is a flood plain. That might be another reason why it's probably best to put something there this time. You can always close, make it where you can close that side if it gets too wet.
Does it, does it jet, like, is it? Yeah, does it flood out? Is it the place you would put a garden or is it?
I haven't really mulled it, played, in time I've been here, but, I mean, it could flood, nobody's concerned about it because nobody lives there. Um, you know, just because it's a flood plain, there's certain things you can and cannot do there. You know, just putting, you know, a dog park or a community garden wouldn't be a problem with that.
I think, I think community garden would be a raised bed too, which would even be a little higher.
Yeah. But you can't fill, you can't fill it with flood plain.
Can't put a raised bed in with.
Yeah, you can't, you might be able to, but you're just.
Well, you gotta figure out first of all where the flood plain is, like how much is an tree on that?
It's right, like, if you can see it or you can see it on the screen.
I, I can see.
It's nice to get this side.
How far does the blue come into?
Thank you for this, that's awesome. Mary Beth, you fix that?
Jim's got it, it's great.
Okay, so we're over on the, there's the Little League Fields. We're over on the right side here.
So, can you top off our back of those? And you can see where the, where the walking path goes through and.
If you take it and I walk there, you can see that's where we walk.
And you know, you know what something is, when Mark took me back there like an hour ago, you don't realize how big it is until, until you walk back there. And then with the map, you, you can stand right, like in the middle, uh, right, uh, right about there, that's the high point, and you can see that it's a flood plain. I mean, you can see it's just lower. And you could still put up a dog fence and maybe flood sometimes and maybe it doesn't. But it's a nice area that dogs, dogs run around in. I guess the only question is how much, you know, are you able to put drainage in there if it's a flood plain, like a, um?
Like a fresh drainage.
It's higher than the ditch that's next to it.
Yeah, well, it, it goes this way and then it goes down and back up. And that down area, kinda it looks like you can see that it gets a little soggy. But it all goes to the creek. So, if you even build that little down area, it all go to the creek. So, I don't know what our rules are.
Okay. You know, we'll be able to work with it. It's just not as simple as just throwing up a fence or.
Throwing up a real advantage.
You know, you're gonna have to look at it a little bit.
Okay. We've got time.
But what's nice is that when you go out there and you look at, if you keep the size of like the Dogwood Shelter in mind, um, there's plenty of room there for like a, a Dogwood Shelter or a trail there. And, um, parking in that whole high area.
Right.
I mean, there's a lot of land. When you're driving by at 25, 30 miles an hour, it looks like a little slipper. Then when you're walking there, you're like, wow, this is a lot of property.
On this map that I made, David, David, I'm out there, a probably better place to shelter is where you found outdoor areas or, because, you know, high ground and the view is fantastic.
Yes.
And then make this all parking in the front or even some kind of special thing or cookouts or something, you know? You have a Dogwood there, you have that, what do you call the grills in there or? Maybe, that's kind of cool.
Jim, do we know where the sanitary and water line is in there? Are they up above East Main or?
Right, there's a water line on the north side, so it would be hard to get to water. Sanitary, I believe, is in the middle of the street and they did a chance for like that. But because there was a house there previously, it has, it has a ladder coming to the house, uh, you could probably tie into that. We just have to check the condition of it.
So, you're saying for the possible community gardens, it'd be tough to get water?
No, it'd be easy.
All be easy?
Water, water line is on the north side.
Oh, it's on the north side?
Yes, we'd be able to tap into that and run one of them.
That's perfect.
Yeah.
And then what you, what you're saying that the raised bed might lead to more, is it just a great level of garden?
It may, I mean, I have to look into the, now, this is just the overall flood plain. Uh, there's some things we can and cannot do with the flood plain.
Okay.
Well, we're busy with that, uh, John, we have lots of time to work on that. But it's an idea we shouldn't let go.
You can always, like, as long as you got that space, you can rework that space and it's a, but.
The park itself for the dog, the dogs itself.
Yeah.
Right. And there are some trees back there. A lot of them are ash that you can see are dying. Ashes are all dead in five years.
And everyone ash boards.
It's all back there. They got a lot of those trees where the ash is, and so those are gonna have to, um, lose some of our gas. It's terrible. So, any other, uh, okay, continue to talk about it and there's nothing really going on or coming on or anything, but we've got, from everybody, move forward to see what you can accomplish some marketing.
Like I said, the Parker Rec Committee, it's.
Definitely.
We'll keep, keep pushing it along and developing.
I think to develop, uh, I mean, from a cost perspective, as you mentioned, I think there's a good alternative.
Collaboration.
Collaboration.
External funding, but from a shelter standpoint, I think that'd be helpful to look at and say, I think we've got good precipitation right now. Shelter rental for the dog.
Right.
It's very good shape there, and price wise, pretty good sense.
Right.
But yeah, we'll look at that and see how it turns out as soon as we can.
All right, very good. Next up is street and alley. B, though, we're going to put a hole to start the discussion, we don't have the probation minutes from the planning commission. We'll give those to you, and we'll discuss this at later time. So that being said.
Mary Beth.
Chairman Fonte.
Okay, um, so we're gonna, I have a small power plant visit picture, you wanna pass it around to everybody? There should be. I know you guys are so busy. Anyhow, so the first thing we're gonna talk about is the perpetual fire hydrant, uh, which is on Apple Grove. Okay, um, so the first one is the map, if you can see the map here. So you have Apple Grove. I know, so you can see it coming up on our way today.
Well, there is the.
So anyhow, we see the map, that's a fifty by twenty Eastman, it's basically where Walters Cafe, eventually we'll go. And it's a fire hydrant, so we need to have access to that, so that's on emergency, so I move that we get that on the agenda. Any questions?
No expense, right?
No, this is just so we can sort of, who have the sound house on the table? Right, Jim?
Correct.
So just so we have access until we get it, right?
Right. Just a, we do wanna put, too close to the road, we had to put it behind the sidewalk for Walters. And, uh, just need to get an easement so that we can maintain that idea.
Is that getting closer to the coming something over that way that you?
Okay, Mr. Bowles, about, uh, the, uh, condition of Walters Cafe where your app status to that project?
Sure, at this point in time, they are currently firming up their financing.
I thought it was working here, sanctuary.
I'm sorry, Mary, what were you saying?
Shorten up the financing.
Shorten up the financing. There's a bear mark by my house, so.
Okay, so the next thing up is the, uh, we were talking about, uh, some of us were talking about as we move forward, with trying to recalibrate the streets in the city to make it more walkable area in town. Uh, we've been talking about the solar radar signs, okay? So what they look like, if you look at your next sheet on your list, um, you can see a couple examples of what they look like. They're basically, um, they, they kinda respond to your driving skills, you know, everybody's eating meat, and everybody's looking around all the time. So it's a nice way to snap you back to reality. And so, you know, in discussion, we were thinking, okay, if we come up with maybe two or three of these to start with, and test them out around town, specific areas like, say, for example, um, you need to look at, uh, the map. So, so if you look at the map, you can see, uh, over here where Pittsburgh is coming in off of Portage coming into town here, between Ernie's and Lindy Lane, right before the tech curve, it's pretty tense, you don't know what's going on about it.
Yeah.
And so, you know, as an example, that can be one spot to put these stationary signs. And what's cool about it is, is that they're permanent, so you can just monitor a regular sign. Typically, you'd have a speed limit sign prior to that, and it's highly effective to slow down traffic. What I like about the feature is, uh, if you preset the time or the speed, uh, you know, let's say it's a twenty-five mile an hour speed zone or thirty, thirty-five. Some people tend to be distracted, they go ten, fifteen miles over the speed limit and like that, and it always has a, it tells them to slow down. So it just brings you back, you know, from, yeah, flashes you back. And, um, you know, it's, it truly, the feedback back goes pretty nice. So, you know, that's an example of a few different styles, and they're programmable, and they have a lot of different features, actually. So one of the spots we could be, you know, coming into town off of the Portage or coming into Portage. The other area was thinking, you know, as we move to the future with the city, and we wanna slow them down as the Hoover District picks up, we'd like to slow that traffic down in our town. So maybe we could put one on the south side of Cleveland Avenue, you know, the south, and then one on the north in conjunction to come into town, and just mentally prepare people, and we can test this out, and then the works could maybe pick up another one or two for other neighborhoods. Um, it seems to be a pretty effective way to do it. Typically, the speed limit's placed in front, so it helps let the people know there's no question, I didn't see that sign. Like in the speed in the school zone, sometimes they'll say, well, I didn't see the warning, you know, I didn't know it was in the school zone. So this is a nice tool, it's very effective. Actually, what I did is, um, there's a lot of testimonials, so I went online, looked around the country at other places, and using these signs. And so in your casual system, different testimonials in the last several years. So it's something to consider, so I thought maybe we can talk as a group over the way now about it, potentially what your thoughts are. Also, we can talk with Chief Wilder and Grimes in regards to, you know, what the root issues are. I know like on the trailer that we have, which is a similar product, but there's only one of them, they had it placed down the street on Cordelia, which I could see out my window, and every time I would sit there and watch cars fly down the street since they'd seen that sign, both breaks the way down. So it really isn't true, I mean, I just seen it firsthand. So it's just one of those things that I thought maybe we should talk about as a group, and I just wanted to hear it from us.
John, how much should it cost?
We don't have a price yet, Mike's working on it. Do you have a price, Mike, how about those?
They're gonna run between like thirty-six hundred and maybe forty-three hundred dollars, and then you've got a pole. It depends what kind of pole you want, a pole can run a thousand bucks. Uh, usually doesn't fit very well on a regular traffic sign pole, but we have upped our quality on them, so there are, we probably can get away with using it on our regular sign pole, you know, we have a pretty good sign pole.
Nice. So, um, I thought that you and Chief, we could figure out if you see some trouble spots, the first three, because Soreta and I spoke about it, we've, a couple of us talked about it already, that it might be a good idea, but what's your opinion there?
Well, I think, uh, as part of the master plan, we're trying to slow traffic down on Main Street, first of all. Coming to the historic corridor, if you wanna call it somewhere, you know, maybe, you know, back door to the main, and then maybe, you know, somewhere around Charlotte, slowing people down as they come into our main section right there. You know, as the Hoover Company or the Hoover District gets going, um, as that goes, we may have to slow traffic down there. We may have to change the speed limit in that, those areas right there, because right now, you know, but I've talked about it before, you're sitting, you know, building, and other people have mentioned that, you know, you're a couple feet away on a restaurant, people are forty miles an hour. Through that, that is, uh, that's not what we want them to do, at least as we get more shops and things in there. We wanna slow down and see our city and beware of people walking. So I think, you know, we kinda put them on the two ends of our downtown corridor, little historic district, I wanna call it, maybe between Charlotte and backdoor, somewhere in there, and I think your idea of the, of coming on Portage or right here, you would probably, that completely, if you were flying around in Portage, and those people complain all the time about those big trucks coming flying down through there, that would probably give them a good kick in the side of the head, or at least we had to flash it off somewhere.
But you know, you come in off the road, narrow side by Lindy Lane.
Right.
Then you got hit that curve, and I see a lot of people hitting that curve, actually hitting the curve by the curve. And then they're right into the residential section as flies off, so I think that would be an ideal spot. If there's a light right at the, or Ernie's Bicycle Shop, it is, so from the lights to Lindy Lane is where I see it.
That's where they start picking up the speed.
That's where you ride with the speed. So that would be an ideal one as we look forward to the corridor, they're trying to improve that district a little bit, and make all the entry points into the city really first class.
Could we, um, could we launch it to for next year, give it a try to, and see if we feel this effect makes a difference?
You mean, two here or, um, I was, I don't know, I was thinking three for this year.
Did you, are they readily transferable or?
Well, you said you want to move it out or some.
Well, what happens is, is that technically you could move them, uh, but they're geared to be stationary. So we were kinda thinking, if we identified the two or three spots, and then use those for the next year to really get a gauge on how effective it is, which I believe it will be, then we can decide, you know, if we wanna pick up a few others, or if we just decide we want to keep permanent, want to move around with the wagon, you know, the travel.
Well, if they're clicking down on our signpost, that's gonna be the key, right, it's supposed to, it's gonna make you move.
We just want to make it back and out of, you know.
It'd be nice if you could put it in a location for maybe a couple of weeks to a month, and maybe to another location, perhaps.
I don't know, but it. It does have that flexibility, I mean, you know.
I think a lot of neighborhoods would wanna.
Okay, well, I think, I think we're talking about two different things now. I think, you know, for the downtime area, we need them to slow down all the time, not only when it's there, those need to be permanent. If someone, if someone says, you know, my area they're moving, I think it's great to have one that moves around, like over here in back door. You see the signs that say twenty-five, watch out for my children, that kind of thing, people put their own signs up, maybe we need to put one there.
But can we, last year we talked about when the lights, it wasn't all open secondly, so it was us telling Jim, hey, the lights are triggering, right? So, I mean, I feel like we have pretty high technology lights, and they can slow people down, and they know we're gonna call and get complaints, like we did last year. And then last year, we said, switch up, make them see these lights all silent, so everyone can flash them down. So I feel like we can do that on our own with the lights that we have.
Well, not in four weeks, if there's some other.
Not important, no, coming through from, from East Hill all the way up to.
And there's a difference between being able to efficiently move north and south on Main Street um, and being able to, and having folks do that at just a little different pace for a four or five block period. I mean, that.
And that's the speed limit issue.
Right, which is what.
Right, exactly, you're saying they changed, they changed the speed limit, or right now it's consistent with that.
Yes, right.
So even entering stations, I'm just saying that thirty-five hundred dollars is a decent amount of money to, if we could slow traffic, if that's what you wanna do, we maybe lose to do that by ourselves without, and it's not the three signs to put up in the middle of Main Street.
Well, that's a key too, I think, can they aesthetically fit on the, or, somehow, so as they look nicer? Do they have, do they have to be so, I don't know.
Well, you've been solar, the solar kind looks a little bit more intrusive. Do we have electric, that you don't need that, that's, that's with your other one there, the other ones on the right, um, don't need the solar. The solar panels, and I've talked to the people at Alphand, they have them all around the Alphand Hospital, they have their break, and they work with this one down.
That makes sense, possibly.
Yeah, and they slow things down, and you look with the robot thing on the tops there, they look a little bit.
Mike, what are you saying?
We're looking at the solar ones, because the signs that we have down by the Y Street here, they worked really well all winter long with the solar. So, solar's a lot cheaper, it's a lot, you know, less, uh, cost for us.
As long as solar grass will have.
Yeah.
Those are some.
Well, you can start artists in the same thing, you know, they have.
The other thing we're looking at is slowing the speed limit down in the city, because you have mentioned that we, uh, the engineer and I talked, and we've had Tim just recently use some research on us, if we wanna do it correctly. I guess from my point of view is, what, are you gonna consider the corridor, is it from seven to back door, or Charlotte to back door? Cause that's what we're going to, the best way to sell this place.
Yeah, anywhere.
And they're gonna put that at twenty-five.
Yeah.
In the businesses, you know, that's, they're the ones that kinda want it, so I mean, we talk about those businesses, and there are some sections we don't have this. Understand, who cares about City Hall being in front there, uh, right now, there's nothing in front of the Hoover District, but there will be. And you'll need to slow traffic down for that, for the fountain and all that kinda stuff. So look, we need to look ahead, basically, as to what areas.
We just wanna make sure that, you know, what I think a lot of younger family would like to move into the area would be more walkable spaces. And so as preparations for the bomb, I think we need to slow things down for the tech for businesses, so they see the benefits of that slower pace with more foot traffic. I think, you know, like the seven, what was it, three across seven twenty?
Seven twenty.
Like, that was just a small sample, and I'd like to see a lot more of that type of thing happen in our town, and, you know, market markets and things like that.
Jim, just to clarify, it sounds like, um, there's like three areas we're looking at. One is Main Street, slowing that traffic down, but that would be changing the speed limit, looking at the traffic and parking that happens along the area. And then the next is not the areas where we would necessarily change the speed limit, but it's just to enforce the speed or remind people to slow down. Like if they're going down to Schneider, transitioning from, uh, coming from Plain Town to the North Can, where drops to, what was it, twenty-five? And that's a pretty, so you put one in a place like that where it's a reminder, okay, here's how fast you're going.
Right.
And then if you have, we're talking about the portable ones, because we do have a speed trailer. You know, now, we can move that one around, or get another one, but that would be for the locations that are not for them.
Right.
Well, and it's also, I mean, the speed trailer, it's great, you know, they, every now and then the police will bring it, uh, take it to Woodrow. And then that works, because Woodrow's a lot wider than a lot of places, but certainly, you know, if you put a speed trailer on Portage, that wouldn't work.
Well, they usually put it out in yard, and they do have some yard, you know, mission to put it out in the yard.
Yes.
And they do slow down, don't they, very good?
Well, we were talking about moving them around, I mean, the goal is to really put permanent fixed, like solar ones on specific streets, and then we have one, we have one speed trailer away.
That's right.
So with the other ones, we got a problem area, like we did on Radford, you know, a few years ago, you, you know, set out their traffic count, right?
Yeah, well, there's a method to breaks here, if you guys are gonna look at, and as Jim knows, we've talked about the Portage corridor, hopefully looking for the rest of the area to drop that down to thirty-five or twenty-five. That is a narrow and persuades the city, I mean.
Very narrow.
When you're right there, you're right on top of traffic, those lanes are not very wide, you might be ten, eleven feet wide at most. We're not gonna approach and take right away if you have development plans, I think. Well, we're looking there, then hopefully you guys will be twenty-five mile an hour there, too, what we can do is slow people down, and regardless of these, you did a great, great headset, Tom, I think this is the way to go.
Well, the testimonies like Alaska, you know, there's one of things I always worry about is the hot weather, you know, you get these things, they don't work, or they, they flop. So here, this is one, they had six signs in the coldest weather, and they held it well. So again, that's what I always worry about, not even Florida or California.
Those signs are kinda like handicaps to me.
Some personal vehicles.
Yeah, and then, you know, you can customize it to our style, what we're looking for, you know, like, you know, on the highway, you see the green signs here, and then at the end, it's black and white. So we can probably customize whatever we want, it's just the main thing is, this is a smart move as we move forward with our, our big, big plans, you know, with the city.
Ideally, down the road, if it's worked out, it would be nice to also have it on West Maple, if you go out towards the, or Walsh, as we do the Walsh corridor, slow that people down coming in from Walsh and going towards Walsh. I mean, these are just looking down the road, they work. Um, if you've been to other cities, I know many in Columbus, and Columbus, they have a double place, and, uh, you know, they tend to slow people down in areas where it's a lot of folks. And hopefully we'll have a lot of area.
You know, one of, one of the other items to think about too is manpower, I mean, they do have, it's like a secret salesman, you know, they, they're like an officer on duty. Yeah, because believe it or not, they would at least slow down, so I'm just saying, you know, it's always nice to see the lights flashing on South Main and North Main, so that people coming into the corridor know, hey, don't get anything wrong here, or can't, you know, keep it clean. But it is just a nice, you know, keep them busy, you know, that's the thing.
There might be a data mechanism in this that tells you how the speeds, and I don't know if it's true.
It's true.
That would be something that, that'd be information in.
Yeah, it has.
And that's the price.
Move forward, it's kind of additional.
That's why a speed trailer runs you like a lot of ground, it's a hazard of buildings.
Yeah, it has a tracking, so you know what's happening, but again, you know, I think the main thing is that visual, snap you back.
Mike, did you say each speed trailer is a million thousand?
I guess would have gone, it was not really, you know.
But it has a lot of game, so.
Has a lot of people doing this.
Yeah.
So you're suggesting we get three, Soreta?
I, I would say two for sure, maybe three, and let's just test them out with the guidance of, uh, Mr. Grimes and Chief Wilder, so that we can, you know, and then. I hear it takes about four months to really, to gauge on how effective it is, if there's a residual effect to it. So after you get conditioned with it, and if you just took it away, it tends to slow people down after about four months of seeing this thing flash.
So what if we get one? I don't wanna get too busy about what is.
I would do two, I think two would be good to start with, and then.
Cause the one, whatever you want, Main Street, I think, needs to be done in conjunction with changing the speed. Right, so if we're gonna take those off, you know, we're gonna say, maybe we try it on Portage, or we try it on.
I, I think for sure Portage should get one, because they're off-grid compared to the.
Yes.
We could manipulate the lights a little bit if we need to, on a different time of day, I'm sure Jim can tell you about that on the main corridor. And, you know, maybe assess time on Portage first if we're watching, and then we can get two more.
So you wanna test one on Portage, for sure.
I would.
I mean, I think if you're gonna save any money by buying one worth one, probably not.
Watch it to see what options we have.
Unless we buy a lot of them.
Right. And tell them that we can be a model city for them, if they give us a couple of free ones. And who knows, maybe we can put a sticker on the back, like sponsored by Soreta.
When I fonte, you gotta sign differently.
All right, got it.
That's a good thing, too, people can't turn to it now.
All right, you got my. All right, well, that's all, any other questions?
No.
Okay, eight things, that's all I have for you.
All right, as a housekeeping measure, uh, I'm gonna have a motion in a second to table discussion on the vacation, the portion of order to deliver.
So.
Those are fair to say, all right, I think those same sign, those are carries. Okay, we'll go back to item one of Community Economic Development, uh, the continued discussion of table ordinance thirty-two sixteen CRA. Soreta, it's, uh, you guys received the numbers, all the questions in the front, and last, maybe, what was the estimated property taxes that we would collect, while I'm speaking about the sanctuary brand property here? The estimated property taxes that we would collect, uh, with the fifty percent twelve-year exemption, and that is a hundred and twenty-seven thousand five hundred per year. Okay, and that's, that's just on the property tax, that doesn't include the, uh, income tax. And that's based on an appraised value of sixty million dollars. I, I would venture a guess to say that appraised price would go a little higher than that. I think we're probably gonna be able to, it's twenty, twenty-two, that might be on the low side. And so, but those numbers here on that email you received are based on sixteen million dollar rate of value. I'll open it up for, is that one? So I'll open it up for discussion. Chairwoman Keesley is not here, she wanted to be here with her son for senior night. And I don't know if she's gonna be making it tonight, so if she doesn't make it for, uh, at least the tail end of the conversation, I would propose that we continue this discussion further to the next committee, but I'll open it up for comments now, they don't have any.
If I may, one thing that was raised at the last meeting and was requested to be placed in the ordinance was a provision that Waterside would be included, included contingent upon a letter or agreement from the owner. And there was a question whether or not what had been provided was sufficient. And to me, I didn't believe that it was, I, I believe that that letter was intended more of something more than a handshake agreement showing their, their, their intent of doing something along those, those lines. And there was a request to include in the legislation that agreement or that letter, and in looking at it and trying to put the legislation together, I would recommend that you don't include something like that separate with the legislation for the reason being, what was contemplated is that for the city including Waterside in the CRA, the owner of that property will agree that they will not build multi-fan units for a period of ten years. I imagine, given the history of the, the city working with those individuals and developers, that over the period of time, I imagine there would be negotiations kinda back and forth with, well, perhaps what if we would do something along those. I imagine, given the history of the, the city working with those individuals and developers, that over the period of time, I imagine there would be negotiations kind of back and forth with, well, perhaps, what if we would do something along those lines? And if you include something like that with that type of legislation, every time you slightly alter that, you're, you're gonna be back here and bringing up the entire CRA again, and given that, and this is probably about the seventh time we met to talk about how to put that together, perhaps, what you, what you do with this is, unless we can get that type of agreement before we do the final reading on the matter, is that you don't include Waterside, if that's what you, if, if, if that's the infringement of something that you need, you're not gonna include them unless they have this agreement. So I would recommend that going forward, perhaps you can leave it as it is, and if indeed, until the, the period of time that you wanna give the final reading, and you can't come to an agreement, if that's what you wish, and you simply don't include it, that will give you the, the ability to negotiate terms and conditions of that type of agreement for a number of years without raising the entire CRA again, and you really opened it up for anything you wish to change, when you open up the entire ordinance for a discussion for one matter.
And Tim, I think you're, I agree with you, the theme of this is to say, let's not generalize policy, place, understanding that they are, knowing that at any point in time, you can make the changes, and again, to clarify the specifics there, Waterside is in the CRA right after, which, you know, I think is important to remember as well. So for us to, at some point in time, if there were activities, if there was a broad consensus that we were happy about, or that we were concerned about, we can always do what we can do today, which is to say, hey, we're ready to action to remove that from the CRA. And I don't know why, I mean, I appreciate the fact that developers, same at the time, to put down intent, you know, in writing, we could point back to at some point, but, I mean, I think it would be foolish for us to take special effort to include it for what will be effectively no reason on our side.
My group, we, we discussed this, and we agreed that we were gonna put something within this to force us to break council, it'll be us or someone else to bring it up every two years anyways.
Well, that, that, that is included, and what you've included in the ordinance is, is saying that you reserve the right to bring this up every two years, but it also doesn't limit you in any way to bring it up whenever you wish. And, and what you want to make sure that you contemplate is, if you're going to reduce it, and you're going to bring it up, you should certainly consider those that may have started improvement, or contemplating, or how far along they, they've been, and what you included in the ordinance is that for residential properties, they can ask for this payment, six months after that, they, they've done this, so you want to give full and fair notice of contemplating reducing this CRA, and certainly give enough lead time for someone that may have started an improvement, something of, of that nature, and make sure that you're not gonna exclude, give them that, that opportunity to, certainly if they've begun an improvement there, to complete it, and take advantage, so that harm doesn't come to them, otherwise you anticipate litigation to, to make sure that they're treated fairly.
Well, and I think our trend has been to move much more towards occupancy grants versus real estate ads grants, if we're really looking for some incentive. And so if we have somebody who expresses an interest in the front of the property, we've talked much more, as we did with E E, it's the first example, where we say, hey, we're gonna make a deal, or like you said, the others before, or Sanctuary, where we did the same thing, occupancy. So, or frankly, we did with Suarez, where, you know, things didn't go as well as they hoped, and as a result, you are getting ninety dollars, you didn't lose any money for that, so, again, that's, I don't think we're supposed to, to retain the original, and it's original.
All right, any other, well, I'm gonna bring this back up, maybe two weeks, I mean, since she's not here. The only thing I want to say is not to get it, though, I was pretty much on my cell phone last meeting, and, uh, I just think, just, just look at, look at what we're doing, I just want to reward, you know, I don't want to give neighborhoods, the great areas of the city, but when you look at ten years for remodeling, for twenty-five hundred dollars, look at it twelve years for remodeling to all units, two units or more, which are more or less apartment complexes, or again, fifteen years for, for new construction. I'd rather see us somehow reward those people that come in and buy an old home, and help it, because that's our biggest need, in, in the older neighborhoods. If we can look at these agreements somehow, and look at years, or maybe they're not all a hundred percent, if our law clerk tells us that we can do things that they're not all hundred, fifty percent, I don't know, I don't speak for his opinion. I think we've discussed that, I think, I want to venture that way as a compromise, to say, you know, and that's, never gonna, I've talked, that's just one step in the process for the older neighborhoods. You gotta give them more than just this, because there's, there's no attraction to it, building a new home fifteen years is a lot better deal when you just look at the numbers, for someone even coming into a home, and renovating a kitchen and building a family room. That's what I, that's the past that I want everybody to really think about and explore, because.
I think.
So don't miss work, what are you thinking, timelines, stuff, what are you, I mean, throw it out.
I think they're, 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 they get released out of it, somebody that owns an old home, you want them to, to track, and this is gonna be your duty.
Or we should block those years.
I think so, I think you look at that, or, yeah, you know, five years for new construction is pretty, it's a pretty good deal, and I'm not against it, you know, new construction, it's just, what do we have to, what, where's the city gonna be ten years from now, for all our neighborhoods? And that, you're still gonna build your, your older neighborhoods that need more attention and care, and this doesn't address that as much as building a new home.
Well, if we do anything, I would be in favor of making the number consistent across the board, just for simplicity purposes. What you're trying to say to people is, hey, we want you to make updates, we want to increase the tax base.
We want to do something here, and, and that's one thing, there should be other grants that can be tied to it, or other options that can be signed for this.
But I'd be in favor of doing fifteen across the board.
But, uh, understand, you're almost limited by the, the lower of them, and not the, the higher, the, the state statute permits for the, the residential, for the remodel, for nothing more than, uh, not more than two families, it won't permit you to exceed ten years unless this other provision comes in, and it's the historical or architectural.
So we're doing it perfectly at this point, to summarize, which I think is.
For the rehab.
The number of years we're gonna get caught up in, and what, what might be frustrating is that we're in charge of municipality, and there's argument to be made, that this is certainly something that matters in local concern, and so we might be able to alter that, but what's gonna hold us up, I imagine, would be, whatever we put forward, has to go to the State Department of Development Services, and has to be approved in that way. And if that person believes that the state statute holds firm, that as a charter municipality, you're not gonna be able to alter it beyond the, the years, because it's pretty specific in this section for the residential, you can't exceed ten years unless it's one of those provisions where it is the historical or architectural significance.
So, I mean, it's safe to say we're doing as much as we can, but I think that's, by, and by lowering, I mean, by, again, the existing program that's in place right now, we're significantly limiting the, the threshold for what people need to be able to provide as far as updates, so, you know, by going from fifteen thousand, fifteen thousand down to twenty-five hundred, that allows for a lot of people to qualify, and in ways I think are very meaningful.
Yeah, I just think we've gotta find a way to do more, if that's, that's what.
More of an incentive.
More of an incentive, but, because.
Oh.
How else are we gonna get the neighborhoods to turn around? I mean, when you go live in a home, you're good for fifty years, and, 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 and being anywhere in the city, and we're hoping, you know, more favorable, you know, to build and do our homes in older neighborhoods. Individuals, which you see the tax breaks here, Mark, you've not even met, you know, it's not the call of the mouth, but, you know, when you're, you're not paying twenty-five hundred dollars in taxes a year, because you're building a home, a hundred forty thousand dollar house, and then you spend, you know, a hundred thousand dollars on a house, you're, you're maybe getting six forty. That's a big difference, need more incentive there to turn these around, you know, and we could, because, because if not, it's pretty to be a rental, and, and obviously we got good landlords, and we got a lot of bad landlords out there that don't care, you know, we're looking at the same things the last five, six years the same way, and I think we've gotta get more creative with this. And that's my only, that's not one, it's, it's some of my prerogative here about how this is set up. You know, obviously the advantage is to build wherever you're, you know, whether you tore something down or not, I'm in favor of you tear something down and build it, that's even better, because you solved the problem. But then, then you got vacant land, and, and we got great developers in this town, and I know I've said some things, you know, that more will get those situations, but to be fair, you know, if I'm a developer, and I, and I have a tool for, that tells me I can forgive all my property taxes at a hundred percent, why wouldn't I even look at, like, breaking businesses in it? I mean, I would look at my bottom line, you know, if I have a parcel, and it's done to go either way, why wouldn't I just go and build apartment complexes, because I'm getting a hundred percent tax abatement? Occupancy grants, which we're more favorable of, of, I am, I receive jobs, I think you gotta have a good ratio between jobs and, and living, living units, or, or residents, or, you know, apartment complexes. That's where the city realizes more income than we can provide better services for, the property taxes, we're not, and the schools are suffering long-term. I know, I know, and they're, they're getting what's there now, I understand it, I understand it, thirteen years, you're getting better.
And I disagree with their, I'm gonna interrupt to say, I, I don't agree that they're suffering long-term either, in fact, they're benefiting, they're benefiting hugely long-term. Look at the development that we're, the, the old Bobble Lake Garden, we look at the property taxes that are on there, we saw the numbers over there, we're adding sixteen million dollars, not we, they, they are adding sixteen million dollars to the tax base in the school district, which is enormous, enormous, and there are a lot of, a lot of municipalities that would, or, or townships, or that would, and venture back to us, to give enormous payments to try to get that development in place, just to add a long-term increase in the, the overall value of the tax base.
I still think that's a low praise, but based on that, it's, it's twelve point five million dollars to the schools for the first twelve years.
Right. So I, but.
Just food for thought, I wasn't gonna get into a lot, but that's still what I am, you know, kind of mentally going over.
We're basically covering what this is meant to be for, you know, our area, our, and these areas that we have, they're mostly old homes, that were filled out to a certain extent, there are some areas that we're counting on, I wouldn't want to discount that. But we have the areas that we're concerned about in our survey, is that some of the homes in the interim area are hurting, and they're looking back, and they're nervous, you know, everything go down, so what can we do to give us better incentive? And I understand exactly what you're saying, if I'm gonna own a home, and I'm gonna improve it, I need more incentive than just ten years and a little bit, what, what else is there out there? Are we, are we, we need to think outside of the box, too, as a.
No, that's what Eric does, I don't think that you and I do, I mean, Eric knows about things, and he can suggest it, but.
And we've talked about Eric's fishing, right?
The solution is twenty-six little things that's supposed to.
Come on up, Eric, I mean, you don't have to.
Hey, Chuck, here's something, not CRA related, but this is like what Doug's saying, I agree with Doug about these, we'll say, let's look at the portage for a second, you got these older historic field homes, that, uh, younger people, or rentals, or whatever, because they can't sell, or they're just not as desirable, why not have, uh, some of the council members go and look at an older, or, or, and see if they do some incentive, that they can donate, they cost, or donate paint, shutters, the things that create the facade. I mean, I know obviously they're not gonna get big taxes, and, but what we wanna do is enhance the road appeal, and it's not really that expensive to do if you have some basic tools, so maybe there's some money that we can set aside for that, to help, and it's more entry level buyers anyhow. And so if you can freshly paint it, put some shutters on.
You want younger families looking, so, I don't say you want to spend some money.
It's, it's not really super expensive to paint, it's a siding thing, it's expensive, so if we do put together a handful of creative things, even do a small little seminar on how simple it is to do, set my stuff, and I should go to a couple of box stores, and see if they're willing to donate to the city, uh, you know, as a, a little program or something, and then, you know, people, it's like getting leaf bags, you come and try and get your. Right, Mary, you come and get your paint.
Eric, have you seen anything else out there?
Well, one of the things I, I advocated is, you know, we do this in steps, um, first off, we have homes in the city, fortunately not many, but we have some homes in state that are poorly cared for, you know, I can reference four or five off the top of my head, where there were senior citizens, and, uh, the, the, left, basically, no maintenance, and they're really to the point now, there's one on Valer, and one on Ballard, that basically, you, you, you can't really find them, they should be demoed, and you can start right over. Um, to Doug's point, other communities, you know, there's an opportunity for us to create a nonprofit, House and Development Corporation, different than our C I C, enabling us to go after grants, so those younger folks, the one living in the city, and bring in kids, and, and younger kids, to attend North Canyon schools, which raises their revenue, of course, and I can't escape more about that than I can, but there's opportunities there with Non-Profit Housing Development Corporation, or C P C, to obtain those funds through foundations, and offer that support for the existing housing stock, that still has an opportunity to be renovated. But it's interesting, the last week, I've had three different people come in to, to our offices, that have vacant properties, the city of North Canyon, have been sitting on it for a long time, and they're very intrigued about the opportunity, uh, these are older neighborhoods, vacant houses, there's one on Foster, uh, when he came in on Friday, speaking about that, so there's people that are, they're catching wind of this, and there are opportunities, building the new homes. To dominate some of this, there's other communities that have paint programs, where, you know, they, they offer, uh, painting for their homeowners, and painting their homes, and other things that are simple like that, so there, these are all good ideas, they can all be implemented, but, you know, it's one step at a time, and each one of these solutions is only filling certain specific problems. The CRA is going to the point of offering incentives, so for a house that's being renovated, and Doug's right, you're not gonna get a one-for-one, and you know you can get a one-for-one if you're building your home, but these other things that we have to implement, and over the long run, you know, over a period of ten years, it can, it can go a long way in stopping the light. But we really need to take a look now, you've all commented to me, you've all driven around the neighborhoods of North Canyon, and you've seen problems, and you've seen problems, some of them followed us by rental properties, we had one today, where, you know, he evicted his tenant on Fifth Street, and, and all the junk is out of the herd, and this gentleman lives twenty-five miles from here. He's pretty much absentee until he has to pick a tenant, and the house reflects that, so, you know, and that, there could be other strategies involved, and hoping to protect that someday, but all of these are viable strategies, but this is just the first step, you know, we, after council considers CRA expansion, then we have to take a look and move forward with these other steps. You know, the solid, you know, the older housing stock, you know, we need to make sure that, you know, protecting that, when there's not opportunity, house gets demolished, we do that because of lack of repair, because it's not financially, it's, it's a bad idea to put money into a house that is really to the point where it's simply in its lifestyle, cycle, but, and if, if there's homes that have been well-made, you know, if they're fifty, or sixty, or eighty, or a hundred years old, and people are gonna update those, and we have an opportunity to do that through other means.
I have a question, to Doug's point, has it, has any charter municipality submitted CRA legislation for review that offered more than what the state owed?
I can't answer that, I don't.
I've looked for it, I've not been able to find it. So no one's even, no one ever tried?
Not that I've been able to, to find it, I, I, you know, I was looking specifically for something, a challenge stating that a, this is a matter of concern, and going through the steps to determine whether or not it's something that Charter, municipality may alter, even if it's in direct conflict with the state statute. And I've not been able to see that, but the statute is pretty specific, and it gives you something way, like, for the residential, saying you can't exceed ten years, so you can have a loan.
So you can have a loan, it's just you can't exceed that, and perhaps that's intended in more likely or not to protect the the auditor's office.
Yeah, I can't imagine how, like.
He might have, perhaps a road, yes, how he decided, we're really going to expand these things.
The creativity comes into play, like Doug already said, and then you do other things to incentivize. So that'll make a lot of legal battle when they do this one.
And maybe it's not, maybe it's not to implement it, yeah, if the state doesn't approve.
It's not legal battle, if it hasn't been, uh, if if no one's ever tried, submitted.
Yeah, we have a no problem frame in our own thing, whatever we can do, do it, and see how it works, we can always change it.
Well, it goes to review, what's the, uh, the, it, once we, once we put it together before it'll be implemented, we send it forward and director of department development services.
DSA.
Has to approve, once we get that approved, they.
But then it's a long process, the whole is moving. And the statutes are here, if nobody.
Grant, I love to think about the law.
I'm not saying hold the whole thing, I might go, yes, you're dumb, you guys are gonna have nothing passive. You know, my vision is, we talked about it, I've talked to the neighbors, you know, we, we're gonna read the report, it's gonna be something we're all proud of as a gateway at this point. We got some exciting things coming down the road with those neighbors. Weather and Senate, we're gonna take the problem housing that we got, now, not all of the problems, but our weakest or oldest structures, and turn that into some of our better ones. And that's who we owe it substantially, substantially.
Star separation.
Yes.
Yeah, I mean, is there a reason that we can't? I think we've had a really good discussion, I think you've been fantastic, and good, with the good numbers. Uh, my concern is that I would, I would like to have this done before, sun break for sure. And, I mean, I know we're careful about our shopping here, but obviously, she's participating in this community as well. And is there a reason she?
She's on the way, I don't know.
So we shouldn't put this on for the first reading?
Well, it's been three readings anyways. We can, we can have a committee between the two ones.
Yeah, committee after, we don't mention it as well.
Yeah, and we're discussing all the, kind of, the board, and some, but I mean, I think everyone's pretty comfortable with terms.
Yeah, we're still talking about the, the grant, the sanctuary grant, we're still talking about that, that was that whole kind of like, held it with the numbers, what we're gonna do. I believe that's what we're still discussing on that, and, uh, that may take more time, I don't know. I think she's gonna read more information, I believe, when she gets here. So we're gonna discuss that.
Councilman Griffith said you have until the third reading.
Right, I mean, if not, I don't think we're just, we're trying to be. Hi, Marsha.
All right.
He's fallen on them.
Look at that flower.
It's not real. Give it back. Yeah, it's not real.
The record reflect, uh, chairman of community development, chairman of people enjoying us.
Here, here, sorry about this, here, it's a huge issue.
That's all right, we're, it admits to the cabinet.
We're talking about the sanctuary, the sanctuary.
Just started, six, eight grand, six, eight grand, we're gone over numbers, and we're, to look at.
Gone over all the numbers, that's the worst part.
Have we got any letter, or did you draft or anything about it? Have you talked to him?
Yeah.
Eric's working, yeah.
And I have told him.
And so they, so it's clear, because that was part of their discussion, we wanted to make sure what their intent was, and then if they're willing going forward. They, they're associated with real estate.
Yeah.
And have the council, they understand what would be necessary to, to be clear and enforceable provision in there that they would develop property. It's clear, and then they have that opportunity to get it resolved before this has started making it. What you missed was, my recommendation was that we, at this point, don't include a provision explaining that. The recent meeting is that, in our likelihood, that agreement over the period of ten years will probably be negotiated, and there may be a given due, and some orchestrated, perhaps. Given the history of the city with this developer, and if that, in fact, becomes a chase, and we need to alter that, based on that agreement. We're bringing the CRA back in for this type of discussion. So the recommendation was to not include a provision discussing that. But if indeed we don't receive that type of assurance, then you have to make the decision whether or not we can do the waterside in the CRA.
So that's clarified, you guys also have the legislation, legislation that was drafted, essentially, everything we talked about the last couple times. Looks good to me, I appreciate Mayor Douglas having given it to us tonight, because I would love to hear some agenda, but at least for a reading, I sweetened this in, which is legislation. So you guys looked at the sanctuary grant numbers, um, I know Eric spoke to Todd Hennig today, so they know that we're, we're trying to get in their head about. If there is something they'd like, as far as a gift or donation, try to get and start thinking about it. I've had some conversations with John Merle, and then he's gotten a little bit of family stuff, so hopefully, I'll talk about Bob personally, I'd rather talk to him personally about this issue. And, and the schools to decide, you know, it's a sixteen million dollar project, and it's a significant savings with a CRA agreement, and we need to deal with that. And Eric, did we ever get for sure if we're gonna have to share any income tax because of the, the, do we know the numbers for sure?
I need to speak to the law, Eric, because the COVID's unclear for the residential component. It's very clear if you do an agreement for commercial and industrial, it's, it's not specifically clear for the residential.
Okay, so that's another thing I've been hanging over, because it's such a huge project, we might hit the threshold that we have to share our income tax revenue. Remember, we spoke about it briefly last week, and I, I take that off the table, I know we're not giving our income tax in place of a gift, it should be a gift. But if we're required by state law to share revenue, then I don't know what you can do about that, um, but it's hard just.
See, I like that setup better, because it's more like an occupancy grant, because income tax that comes in is all kind of, fluctuates based on production. So, you know, I'm willing to share the upside, because if if things don't go as well over there as we thought, then, you know, then we share a little bit less. And things will be better initially, which is why we pay property rates for the same reason, because there isn't as much of a downside. You know, but when you're, when you're changing the real estate, then it obviously is long-term, but that's a philosophical statement.
Right, but I think what, I mean, you weren't here last week, so do you understand, because it's such a huge project, we were gonna talk to the schools about sharing things in that revenue, it's not required by us, at least we didn't think so last week.
But if there, if we give away too much, it is required.
Right, well, that's what we're trying to figure out, because this is a residential build, it's not commercial. It was named by that, by the state to be residential. So we're trying to figure that out.
Yeah, but the part I know, and I'm not, you know, there's a big elephant in the room here, that, you know, this property's being built here.
Correct.
Okay, and that is it, now, why are we giving away our income tax when we're, we're giving away property tax? Then we're gonna turn around, and we're giving away school property tax, now we're gonna turn around, give away our income tax at the same time?
That's what I'm saying, when he, when he brought to us last week, I would like to ask him not, not give him unless they're required by state law. Which would mean, that's the profit.
That's what I remember that.
So from that point then, are we, we're looking at the profit tax, right now, it's fifty-fifty. Is that something that we're discussing, uh, less or none, or what? What are we discussing at that, is this something we have to?
Those brand new right now are fifty percent.
Right, fifty percent right now, is that on everybody's forehead, and I, I'm speaking. No, I'm sorry, I know, you know, we're on that. So that's what I thought, we have a discussion, here's a, this is gonna take like a hundred and twenty-seven thousand a year from our school?
I completely agree with you, but don't say it that way.
I know, and the last guy says it, he said something that they'll get dated, but they're already starting to build, that's the elephant in the room.
That is definitely what's going on.
Well, that's, that's where I think we can look at years here, but let's modify some things, I mean, if, 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 if. I'm, I'm hoping to spear compromise on this, we can do a better job of it.
Well.
Um, not just, uh.
Right, and our legislation is about this.
Right, because the schools are everything to this community, I mean, it, it might be the most important thing, we, we think very highly of our government, services, and I, and I think they're great. But really, you're as good as your schools, and we have great schools here, and that's long-term, what you gotta look at. I mean, we're gonna get more income tax information, obviously, Eric and I discussed, I think there's a great point to see who lives where, how much they actually are paying in the burden of taxes, I mean, it's hard. That's gonna be critical information that we can process and utilize for future discussions and decisions. But when people come up and say, I know we're getting some return, but you can't give away everything all the time. You have to, you have to look at it, you know, rationing for down the road, that's all I'll mention. I mean, does everything gotta be fifteen years or twelve years? And you missed this, Martin, I'm going for, as you know, discussed it, the older structures that need to help, and this is, they get the least advantage here, when you look at a paper. And how can we, how can we use additional things?
There's such a catch, right, that really hits everybody, I mean, we can lower, we can lower the fifteen year, but we can't raise the whole amount of yield, so we can't.
So there's other things we gotta do.
So, so where are you, Doug, then? Are you at fifty percent?
I'm for some option, Eric, because listen, I'm gonna be a no vote, you're gonna pass it, so I feel better.
Are you the yes vote anyway?
Yes, I could, yeah.
So what would that look like?
Well, I, I, I don't know, let's get more information back, I mean, we're not gonna pass on emergency, you're gonna have to agree, just continue to discuss it.
We can't segment that out, we can't segment, we can't piece part, piece meal that, that show across collective.
But I think good points are made, if we're gonna give away property tax, why are we gonna share our income, we might get forty-five thousand dollars a year in income tax, now we're gonna have that away?
No, only if we can.
Only if we have.
But we don't know all those answers yet, right? Okay.
So we can talk about that.
But then you also gotta look at the structure there, you know, no one, you're gonna get income tax from people that work there, but you have to get income tax from people that live there, obviously, we don't know that. And that's looking long range, what's going on with our services, what's going on with our EMS, what's going on with our fire? Let's look at all that, it's not like it's a, a residential area that people are working in, buying and contributing in other ways, I mean, be honest about it, you gotta look at all, we gotta look at those forecasts.
Right, the gent, the estimated revenue is forty-five thousand a year, it really is a significant, because of property taxes.
Those are the smart decisions to make, with more information, that's all I'm saying.
What would we have to do to recreate forty-five thousand dollars on the income tax revenue? And that's a lot of lawyers for Eric, you would agree. We'd have to, we'd have to do a lot of occupancy grants, I mean, that's, that's a big win for North Canyon, forty-five thousand dollars on the income tax revenue.
Yes, I agree, but Doug makes a great point, those, those are high-service sealizers, our, you know, our Sam Berry and our, our.
We should generate revenue from, from a, from an EMS.
No, we have such a great, even now, we don't pay for our EMS.
But we don't lose money on that.
Oh, no, I think we do, don't we?
We're a fact.
Yes. We're, we're.
We're the call.
Really? It's not that.
Now, we're not.
Sorry, yes.
But I don't, we're all over span.
We're pretty even now, and EMS runs as far as what insurance is okay, okay.
So it's, I mean, so, yeah, they require more services, but generate revenue from that. Even if it's not a hundred percent, it's still some revenue.
Good discussion point, I'm, I can work with something to move it on center a little bit, I'm not saying, you know, I'm gonna entirely vote for it, but I think we need to discuss this.
So you're saying like twenty-five percent less years, less percent?
It's a combination, I don't, I don't have it as a task out, let's get more information, continue to discuss.
Um, Eric, the only new one I can even, you know, the current CRA, the current apartment buildings, you know, Lemon's other apartment buildings, I apologize, I'm for the old.
Orthridge.
Thank you, I apologize, what is that CRA currently, what is, is it fifty percent, twelve years?
It's a hundred percent.
Hundred percent.
I don't know who produced that document.
That is, Chuck who produced that document.
Okay, well, I'm gonna use it, because it looks, looks fairly accurate, Eric, but according to his document, appraisal's two-nine, they're getting six, close to six, fifty-nine thousand dollars.
Thank you, right, yeah, so that one's.
I think we gotta add some more to it, so we can, for.
Because actually, that current CRA is twelve, a hundred percent, so we've already whittled it down to twelve fifty percent. Because our current CRA is twelve a hundred percent, just.
This is, fifteen years is a hundred percent.
Okay, just you, so we've whittled from twelve to fifteen, or fifteen to twelve, and then a hundred to fifty, for apartment building, to greater than two years.
Yeah. But, so the occupancy grant answer, someone at fifty percent, I, I think we should look at years, years as far as the term, and how much, I mean, it's still gonna benefit the developer.
As, you mean, offer an occupancy grant rate, wait, so?
No, I'm just saying, just even looking at the existing state language here, the CRA, I mean, there's nothing wrong with it, we don't have to give it all away. We can, we can help, but still try to save some reserve back where this school was down the road, you know, so we have to.
Well, we can't, so if we, we go. So if you look at just one end of it?
No, I'm, I'm gonna, I'm gonna look at it overall.
Yeah.
Well, I think still, the fact is, it's being built, it's already done, they're gonna build it one way or the other, so why are we giving the same amount of something as branding? So I think we gotta look at that, and I'm kinda torn back and forth with that.
Whether they report them or not, because if you're not going to, you can't, so you either.
So you can't make that section, twenty-five percent, eight years, something like that, that was your saying, why can't we do that?
I don't think we can maybe, because it has, you, you have your three options, renovation, new build, greater than two, greater than.
So if you change, change it, so the whole, the whole thing?
Yeah, I mean, you can rule that plus one bill.
Plus, we can apply all of them.
Right.
I mean, you can't do construction.
Even something that's already started.
Oh, yeah, because you have six months after you finish to.
So if you're, if you're saying it's sitting around, the only thing we can do is change or modify the.
Change the terms, you can make all new construction.
So no matter what, if something's started already, they can still apply, that doesn't, that's what I was looking for, that's what I, what I was looking for, the elephant, there it is. Because, you know, here's a project's already started.
I think that's awesome for a lot of these series, that's what, choosing for houses.
That's why we have that, right, it's time after things are ready. I mean, it's like insurance, I mean, it's like, um, what, rate for your home, sometimes you get a good rate, sometimes you have, it's all the time, I mean. It's how we just save how much money with the bonds, we got it at the right time.
So then, it comes down to the sanctuary, your two options are, it's either in or it's out, the sanctuary grant.
Correct.
Yes.
So it's either nothing, or, or a hundred and twenty-seven thousand dollars.
Which, I mean, in some ways, makes the discussion easier.
Yeah, yeah.
So you're a yes or no?
Yeah.
So you understand that, there is no. No, inter-rout with the terms.
Terms.
We have done, we have the terms. Well, the terms change, they change for everybody, right?
Yes.
Except.
But, okay, you guys keep saying that, but remember, the terms have changed. The current two CRAs, they're greater than two units, it's fifteen years, a hundred percent.
Right, we've changed that.
Well, we have changed it to twelve and fifty, so don't say we haven't, I'm just.
No, 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 so if you look at the map, what's that included, is that just?
It's like, it's not.
That was just the, uh.
No, it's.
It has, essentially, that map has been the same since day one, we really truly have to change it again, you know, we, we have to work, but.
Well, I think it's also worth noting that we're not helping anybody out for, we haven't passed it, so that's.
That's, can we, well, for sure, for sure, it's.
It's gonna take three reads to pass it.
It, it isn't actually, but, no, it's not a zoning issue, and we will pipe in an emergency on clear reading, so if we get it down in state, we can hopefully get it lit. So it does not require three reads, does not require any, there's not a requirement here.
Good to know.
So, the, so next thing is going on the agenda.
Well, President, anything, anything, can I hear something? Yeah, I'm okay, I'm okay with it.
As president.
Yeah.
I can tell you, and I'll, I'll tell you, we came second here, Eric was gonna talk to Todd Hennig today, you know, he was presenting the numbers, and he was okay. Because I think in his mind, he's getting a hundred and twenty-seven thousand dollars a year.
He never got.
And then after twelve years, he's getting three hundred and fifty, or forty, or whatever.
I understand, I, I was discussing with superintendent, you have to also understand that they're getting ready layoffs, several teachers.
Oh, no, they're.
So they're very young, they're not all paid. So they're very, they're not okay with everything that goes on, so they just know that they don't have a lot of...
And they will be pretty lucky, we all know that, so...
But think about, if we were having this discussion when St. Luke's was originally built, you know, what kids were worried about, if we give a little bit of real estate tax right now, and how long has that institution been or are in, and will continue to be?
Yep. Let's keep in mind that some of their, now, I don't wanna stick my nose in their business, but some of their fiscal woes are internal, it's because of their salary structures and step raises and how that all works. I know a little bit about enough to be dangerous, but I know that, you know, there are some building, building raises for the TV. Not that they don't deserve it, I'm just saying, that's, I mean, that's just the nature of the beast.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Exactly. It's just like you were at the beginning here, so...
Well, let's put it on the agenda. Well, it's something on the agenda. Just give more, if you're prepared, what you want, I'm sorry.
We had mentioned the St. Luke's, but St. Luke's is nonprofit.
Right.
They pay no property taxes to any tax industry, so just as a comparison.
Probably bad example.
Well, right, you go from income tax.
Yeah, right, sure.
Right.
Definitely, for any tax.
You would add examples.
Literature, why, any nonprofit?
Yeah.
Okay.
So, what do you want from us next week? What was the question? The questions are, first of all, we gotta get the one answer, and we do gotta share the feedback.
One of the terms that you don't believe in.
Did we decide on waterside? What are we gonna do with that?
It's in, and we'll get the letter.
The letter.
Because after the third reading, it's out.
Okay.
So I'm not...
Okay. The question was, under the current terms of the proposed CRA, we don't have any income tax sharing that would be required, right?
With the sanctuary grant.
Only, only here, we go over fifty percent. And I need to clarify that with logic, Eric.
So you're gonna...
We go over fifty percent, then you have to share, which is why our commercial industrial agreements, historically, we never exceeded the fifty percent.
Right, mindset. So we'll get the answer to whether we have to share or not. And then we'll, you know, we sell, we'll take many of them in, and, of course, in the schools. Are we figured out? Welcome. I didn't, you texted me, I was like, oh, no.
I won't share.
We're right. I would wait for it, I was texting you. We should.
You know, it's another really good stuff to talk about. Up parts and things, you know. Yeah. More of a making of thirty, in a world called, to forego the meeting on the week of the thirtieth, to legislate in that week. Or we won't be...
Won't be so long.
June fifth, one.
Right.
For you, it'll be a... Correct.
Can we double up, say, the first one and two?
No, June sixth, to be committed to the...
So you...
Regular scale. If we wanna make a vote, but...
I'm probably, yeah, I mean, we double it. I'm sure there's gonna be some stuff that we need to pass, I don't really know. Just to... Down, which takes a maybe three up.
Oh, maybe, maybe, what's the...
So that'll be a vote.
Committee.
No, it's a debate.
Committee of six.
So I would like to have a, you know, counting that as well.
Special council meeting.
Yes, for a vote on the CRA.
Okay, so, let's do this. We have a motion, the second, to forego the meeting the week of...
Motion, ten.
All fair and say, aye.
Aye.
Both the same side, motion carries, we may have a motion, the second, to add a special council meeting on June sixth.
Can we do this before desk the first time?
What?
Because you're gonna...
Next week is on the agenda for the first reading, so this would be the second reading.
Yes, three weeks from now.
But you add that into the agenda, and have it passed the first time, is my question.
First, I'm just scheduling a meeting, I'm not putting anything.
Okay, yeah, we don't have to, we're not good or not.
I'm just getting...
There might be other legislation that's what I'm...
I'm just scheduling a council meeting. So motion, the second, to put a special council meeting on June sixth.
Motion, second.
Both the fair and say, aye.
Aye.
Both the same side, motion carries, that's it. Our ten motions, most good.
Second.
Face that, aye, both the same side. All right.
Hey, Mom?
Yeah.
Can you guys clarify this? Tax. What's the taxes on the grant? Now, is that the four tax?
You know, I'm kind of staying on all this, but...
Okay.
That's fifty percent.
It's one of these things that we need to... It's about all the years.
Okay, now, that's... We have a meeting, yes.
That was a great idea.
That's...
It won't be out the... It won't be next week, to talk about, but at least you keep on that.
Well, I'm happy. Good.
Yeah, absolutely. Well, you're done. But it's gonna be cut through. I think this is not a... Ten months, so we're probably gonna be done.
It must have...
Yeah. It's gonna be so well... You know, you say that, but it's like... You know, we have supposed to best... It's just... I'm not... It's just... It's just... Two years, two years. Two years. And then you're... I'm not... 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 I'm not...
By the way, this is what we're...
I just... So we're... I'm not... I'm not... I'm not... I'm not...
Don't say the shelter share, because that's the idea, the...
Are you talking to Eric, or are you...